Good evening, welcome to the August 3rd, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. And I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by the Planning Commission staff and the applicants, I'm assuming, via teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. Generally, we do the pledge of allegiance here. Do I have a volunteer? Either that, or we can all do it together. I pledge allegiance. Do the flag. By the United States.
The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Dana, are you our city clerk today?
No, I'm here Mary Ann. Go ahead and call the roll.
Okay, would you please take roll then?
Chair Klinger.
Present.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Winkler. Commissioner Miller. And Commissioner Winkler. I see you're all on the call, so we have five present.
Okay, thank you. And now first off is the approval of our agenda. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request any item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there any such request? I guess not, not hearing any. So I'm going to call for a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
I move.
Thank you, okay. And the vote, City Clerk Harper, will you please call for the vote?
Chair Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries, thank you. Public communications, at this time, members of the public may address the commission regarding the items on this Planning Commission meeting agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to provide comment are asked to send, in this case, we're coming by comments by email to the city clerk before seven tonight. And they'll be posted on the city website for review by the public. Any documents, city clerk?
Yes, Chair Klinger, we received four communications that have been distributed to the commissioners and made available to the public on the city's website.
Okay. And now we need to, do we have to, should we read them?
Because they are part of the hearing, they'll be read during the hearing.
Oh, okay.
So they will all be read, but as part of the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're looking to the, for the approval of the May 18th, 2020 minutes on our consent calendar. And I'd like to call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, City Clerk Harper, do you want to take the vote by roll call?
Chair Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so we passed the consent calendar, and now it's time for continued items, and there are none. Scheduled matters, and there are none. So we're looking for new business. And that is... Let's see. Uh, let's see. This is the location, and the subject is for minor use permit to permit a covered roof access structure to exceed, at 44A Surfside Avenue. Do we have a report on that?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good evening, and fellow commissioners, good evening. Item B this evening is at 44A Surfside Avenue for a minor use permit for covered roof access structure to exceed the maximum height of 35 feet by 5 feet 10 inches. We have an MUP before you, as it's required for a covered roof access structure to exceed this height up to 42 feet. Next. As you can see, the site location is on Surfside Avenue at 44A. It's surrounded by the beach and residential structures around it. We did receive a correspondence this evening. It was not in favor of this project. That is why the yellow arrow is on your screen this evening. It came from the Ocean View Hotel, which is across PCH. The building's approximately 100, or 330 feet away from the structure. The correspondent stated that it would block the view from the hotel of the beach. The structure that's, that we're looking at this evening is approximately 60, or 76, 77 square feet, and was designed per our requirement. And it's minimal in size. Next. As you can see in this, this is a site plan. The structure itself meets all of the setback requirements for Surfside area. Next. There is, there's also going to be a remodel as part of this, but since this property is not non-conforming, it would go through just its normal process. Surfside Colony has reviewed the plans and has approved them. The, the section right there with the red box around it is the structure in question. It's a stairway. And as you can see, as you will see in the next slide, which is the elevations, the box that surrounds this is just the size of that stairway, just enough to provide a cover for the door and the cover for the actual staircase. Next. The red boxes indicate the covered roof access structure. As you can see, it will match aesthetically with the the remodel of this, of this unit. The structure itself is going to be 40 feet 10 inches tall. It's allowed to be up to 42, but only that covered roof access structure. It was designed to sit off to the side as per our codes requirement and to be as least obstructive as possible. And the designer and the homeowner have done everything that we require of them to move this forward. With that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner comments?
This, this is Commissioner Thomas. I have just one question for Mr. Fowler. You know, we've had, I don't know, over the past years, at least three or four of these type of permit requests. Is there any difference between this one and, and the nature of all the previous ones that we've approved?
Commissioner Thomas, no, this is just the normal process that we go through to approve this height variation for this type of a structure.
All right, thank you, Steve. That's all I have.
Anyone else? No? City Clerk Harper, do we have any emailed comments on this one?
Yes, Chair Klinger, we received an email from Ocean View Motel. The subject is 44A Surfside Drive. And it says, "Please deny property owner request for permitting of an addition that is under 10,000 square feet. Citizen has a responsibility to contribute to the preservation and enhancement of the environment. Give permit property owner will not preservation view of ocean cross streets of Pacific Coast Highway. Signed by Pravin Patel." That is the only comment that was received for that item.
Thank you, thank you. Would any of the commissioners care to comment on that? No? Okay, would the applicant like to address the commission?
There are no applicants on the line.
Oh, okay, well, that makes it easy, I guess. All right, so I'm going to call for a motion and a second.
Chair Klinger, if, before we do that, if we could go ahead and to formalize this, open and close the public hearing, and then we can go ahead and deliberate and call for a vote.
Sorry, okay, I should close the public hearing then? Okay.
Move for approval.
I second. Winkler?
Okay, City Clerk Harper, would you please take the role?
Chair Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Commissioner Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. And next is Minor Use Permit 20-7. Yes?
Chair Klinger, I apologize to interrupt one more time. I just wanted to note for the record that this item has a 10-day appeal period that will begin tomorrow.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and now we can go on, yes, to Minor Use Permit 20-7 on 232 8th Street. The applicant Erin Downey and Melissa Phillips. Do we have a report?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item C before you this evening is at, is at 232 A Street for Minor Use Permit 20-7 to remodel the interior of an existing single-family residence that is non-conforming due to setbacks. The reason an MUP is required is due to the non-conformity. And under a minor use permit, you can alter up to 25% of the interior walls of a non-conforming building. Next. As you can see, the location is on the east side of 8th Street, surrounded on the front and north and south by residences, to the rear by commercial units. Next. On the site plan here, you can see I have a greenish color circle and a red one. Those indicate the setbacks on the residence and the garage. The required setback for this particular property is three feet. And on that north side, it's showing a two, two-foot 10-inch setback and a one-foot 1-inch setback on the garage. That is why it is considered non-conforming. Next. The red box indicates the areas that are going to be remodeled. A wall has been removed within the kitchen to create an open, an open floor plan in this residence. Some walls have been removed to create a closet within the bedroom, moving a couple of walls. Those walls will be proposed as part of the decision on this minor use permit. There's not a lot to this presentation. We did receive one correspondence from one of the neighbors that was in favor of the project. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Let me know if you have any.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any commissioner comments or questions?
I have one comment. Okay, I spoke with Steve Fowler earlier about this on, in the resolution, Section 3. It gives today's date is July 23rd, and that's not correct. Today's date is August 3rd.
That is correct, there was a typo.
Okay, any, anyone else? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, Chair Klinger, we have one email comment from Andy, last name Q U I E N T. Subject 232 8th Street. And it reads, "We have no objection for the remodel of the property. We wish Erin and Melissa well and pray that they survive the remodel." Sincerely, Andy and Lisa, Q U I E N T. And that's the only email comment we received for that item.
Thank, thank you. Do we have an applicant to address the commission tonight?
We do, we're, we're here.
Okay, would you like to say something to the commission?
Yeah, no, we appreciate, you know, all the effort that's gone into, you know, getting this prepared, and hopefully there are no, no issues and we can move forward. But I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing and call for a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. Chair Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries, and we go on to the Minor Use Permit 20-2 at 800 Pacific Coast Highway. And the applicant is Scott Levitt.
Madam Chair, before we move on to that item, if I may, one more.
All right, yes, go ahead.
Similar to the last, this item had a 10-day appeal period which begins tomorrow.
Thank you, I'm sorry for leaving you out there. Okay, on this Minor Use Permit 20-2 at 800 Pacific Coast Highway, do, is there a report?
Yes, Madam Chair, good evening, and fellow commissioners. The item before you this evening is Minor Use Permit 20-2 located at 800 Pacific Coast Highway. Think I see my slide, there we go. Next slide, please. Thank you. So for the proposal, the request is to allow the operation of a 24-hour automated teller machine or an ATM within a commercial center within a general commercial zone. Now, the Seal Beach Municipal Code requires separate approval for ATMs through a minor use permit, which is why this item is before the, see, next slide. This is a site location of the proposed location of the ATM. So the subject property is located on the southwest corner of Pacific Coast Highway and 8th Street, at 800 Pacific Coast Highway, within the general commercial or GC zone. The subject is, the subject property is fully developed, consisting of a two-unit commercial center approximately 11,454 square feet in size with associated parking. The two units within the center are occupied by retail clothing store and a medical office related use. So the graphic in front of you shows the subject property. It shows, it's highlighted in yellow with the parking up front, and of course, the building situated towards the back of the property. And the red arrow signifies the placement of the ATM. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan of the, of the property. And so the applicant proposes to install a surface-mounted Wells Fargo ATM machine to be located in the front of the medical office suite just west of the business's main entrance. The location is easily accessible and is provided with adequate lighting and offers an unobstructed view of Pacific Coast Highway. This graphic also shows the number of parking spots that are in there in addition to the size of the two units that occupy that property. Next slide. The site view. Once again, this is a surface-mounted ATM to be placed, as you see it there. And this would be the distinct business that's there now is the medical office suite, which is the hydration room. And to the right of that would be, that's not the entrance, but that's the exit for the retail store, which is called Rip Curl. Next slide, please. As part of the review of this and previous ATM applications, we do require that there be sufficient lighting. And this item also was sent to the police department for their input as well. So the graphic in front of you shows the existing lights where, which are at the top. And the new floodlights, which would flank both sides of the ATM in addition to, in addition to security cameras, which are also made a part of this approval. Next slide, please. So as part of the analysis, the city of Seal Beach Municipal Code allows for banks and other financial institutions in a general commercials zone. It allows them by rights. However, ATMs do require a separate approval through an MUP. The site offers, the two additional off-street park, the code requires that there be two additional parking spaces per ATM. This particular commercial center provides a total of 21 parking spaces, and that leaves with a surplus of four spaces. The ATM will draw two spaces from that, but it will still have a surplus of two parking spaces, which exceeds the locational requirements as specified by the Seal Beach Municipal Code for exterior located ATMs. And as previously mentioned, the Seal Beach Police Department recommends installation of surveillance cameras in addition to lighting, which is, has been made a part of the conditions of approval. Next slide, please. So our recommended action is to approve, is, Steph recommends that the approving MUP 20-2 with conditions. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Are there any commissioner comments or questions?
This is Commissioner Thomas, I have a question. Marco, the, so Wells Fargo moved out of the, from next door to Bonds, and so did they close up that ATM there, and they're relocating it across the street?
I'm not, I'm not entirely aware if that was a move that they strategically made. In my conversation with the applicant, they chose this location because they felt it was, it offered a good deal of lighting, safety, and it was an ideal location for their customers. But perhaps the applicant may have additional information towards, for your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioner comments or questions?
This is Commissioner Miller.
Go ahead.
This is Rondi Winkler. My question really had to do with the public comment that said that the security was inadequate. Could somebody discuss that?
I'm sorry, I'm understanding that there was a comment that the security aspect was inadequate. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, Chair Klinger, would you like for me to read that comment now?
Yes, we can open the public hearing and go ahead and read the comment.
Okay. The comment came in from Carl Galucci, and it says, "Good afternoon, submitting the following comments relating to item D. May not be categorically exempt under Class 1 of Section 15301 of SEQA due to an expansion of use under extended business hours, 24 hours. Proposed conditions on minor use permit are not adequate with regard to security. Additional security cameras are necessary on both alley side and 8th Street side of the building." And that concludes his comment.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner, as I previously mentioned, that's lighting and cameras were made a part of the approval for this. To commit what they call a security plan. With that, they would have to detail where exactly the cameras would be located. We can condition this to also include cameras within the alley as well.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, did you have something to add?
Well, my, my, my comment was similar to Commissioner Thomas. I was just curious, because I know somebody, I saw somebody just use that ATM next to pavilions, you know, last week, and I was just curious, are they shutting that one down to move, to move over there?
I've not been in contact with Wells Fargo representatives, but considerably, I believe that might be a recent one. I don't know.
Okay, anyone, anything else?
I have a question, please. It shows those, do they call them bolsters, or what are those, like, metal pipes or something that are, they're not metal pipes, but they look in front of the ATM to prevent a car from driving into it? What do they call those things?
Ballards.
Ballards, okay, that's it, ballards. The picture showed them, but I don't see where in the resolution they are there. In the resolution, under Section 5, Number 5, it says, "A surveillance camera that provides a clear view of the area in and around the ATM parking lot shall be affixed on the premises." Maybe it should say cameras, plural, and specify how many you think would be sufficient. But nowhere does it say anything about the ballards. At least that I can find. They were in the picture, but they're not mentioned in the resolution.
Commissioners, if I can, I see it here, so I'll speak up, but if you look up a little bit at condition number 2, which generally talks about a security plan that could include features.
Oh, there it has ballards, yes, okay.
And then, and then after we finish this question, I do want to flag the commission's attention that we, though we opened the public hearing, we have not yet heard from the applicant.
Yes, can we hear from the, would the applicant like to address the commission? Is Mr. Levitt here?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me now?
Yes, we can see you now.
Okay, great. Normally, I thought the controls would be done by the city clerks, I didn't know. Yes, my name's Scott Levitt, on behalf of the applicant, who is the landlord of the building. As far as the ATM across the street next to the pavilions, it's indeterminate how long that availability of those ATMs will be there. If a new bank enters that space... If a new bank enters that space, then Wells Fargo would, uh, most likely have to vacate. So, Wells Fargo is, is looking for a much more permanent solution to the Seal Beach old town. And this is the, the site that they selected for the permanency of the ATM.
I see. Okay, thank you. Uh, I will now, uh, did you want to say something else?
No.
Okay. Uh, I'll now close the public hearing and call for a motion and a second.
Can we put, uh, that it requires two security cameras as opposed to one? In case one goes out?
Said that already.
Can we do that?
I, I think, uh, this is Commissioner Thomas. I'm more inclined to go along with whatever the police department recommends and approves for this location.
Well, would you like to put one security camera at your house or two, three or four?
Well, I could ask for fifty cameras, but I'm going to go with what the police department recommends.
I see, well, I'd like to make a part. I moved that we, to approve, but we had to, uh, an additional camera.
Can we do that, Mr. Fowler?
Oh, I'm sorry, this was, um, my, my, this is Marco Pravos.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, um, yeah, if I can, I'll spring your attention once again back to, uh, condition number two. It does require the security plan to be submitted for our review in addition to the police department review. So, um, if the applicant doesn't have any objections, we can, you know, put a condition that at least be two cameras.
Okay, um, Mr. Levitt, any objections?
Uh, we do not have an objection to that.
Okay, thank you. Now, can we call for a motion and a second?
I apologize, commissioners, before, um, if, if the motion was to add a secure, uh, additional security camera in addition to what Marco was just saying, I would, I would make that change to condition number five to make it plural as was discussed previously. So, I, I would just recommend that the motion include that amendment if that is what the commission would like.
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, who would like to give us a motion on that and include the second camera?
Uh, I'll make the motion, this is Winkler, but I thought Naomi Campbell had made a motion, she just needed a second. So, whatever you decide, I'll be
Oh, okay. Okay, Ms. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, did you make the motion?
Well, I made a motion for approval, uh, but require, uh, two security cameras instead of one.
Thank you, okay, then maybe, uh, Ms. Wink, Commissioner Winkler, you can do the second, please?
Yeah.
Okay, and will you call for the vote?
Yes, Chair Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you, motion carried, um, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair, this item, um, to the others, uh, that we've had tonight before us has a ten-day appeal period, which will begin tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And now on to the minor use permit twenty dash four at one hundred forty-fourth Street to allow the alteration of an existing front porch cover, is there a report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, all the commissioners. Um, once again, the item in, in front of you this evening is one, permit twenty dash four, uh, the app, the address is one forty-fourth Street and the applicant is Leo Sandoval for, uh, Barbara Evans. Next slide please. So, the request is for a minor use permit to allow the addition or alteration of a fifty-square-foot front porch addition to an existing single-family residence that is non-conforming to, due to setbacks in a residential high-density or R H D twenty zone. Uh, next slide please. So, uh, this is a, a site location here, it's an area view, but the subject site is a three thousand five hundred and twenty-four square foot parcel located on the southwest corner of Central Avenue and Ford Street in the Old Town area. The parcel is developed with a non-conforming, single-story, single-family residence and a detached two-car garage. Uh, the subject site is located in the R H D twenty zone and is surrounded by residential, residential uses on, um, all sides. So, next slide please. So, this is a site plan of the sites and, um, the subject property is, uh, non-conforming due to the side yard and rear yard setback of the rear detached garage. Um, and according to the Seal Beach Municipal Code, interior lot properties in the R H D twenty zone are required to maintain a side yard setback that is ten percent of the lot width and, and a rear setback that is twenty-four feet minus the alley width. Um, the subject property measures approximately thirty feet wide by hundreds, hundred seventeen and a half feet long. And based on these dimensions, the development standard requires a side yard setback of three feet and a rear yard setback of nine feet. Um, currently, the detached garage has a side yard setback of one foot and a rear setback of three feet. So, um, that's the reason why the property is not conforming, just because of the garage. The garage doesn't need to require setbacks, but the rest of the property does. The applicant is proposing to provide additional coverage by expanding the existing front covered porch, um, by extending it two and a half inches, two feet, six inches on each side. The expanded front porch will measure ten feet wide by fifty feet in depth, I'm, I'm sorry, ten feet wide by five feet in depth for a total of fifty square feet. Um, the expanded front porch will match an existing slope pitch of roof to create a seamless integration. And the applicant is also proposing to construct an attached patio cover located towards the backbone measuring a hundred eighty square feet. When completed, the front porch addition and rear patio addition will be in compliance with the compliance tax established for the R H D twenty or residential high zone. Um, due to the subject's, um, subject property's not conforming status, a minor use permit is required. So, this graphic in front of you, the site plan shows, um, at the very front, at the very left, the front porch addition alteration. And the next shows the rear patio where that's proposed, that's shaded. And it shows, also, the next one shows the, um, the rear garage, which is existing and which is the only reason why this property is not conforming. Next slide please. And so, this is a elevation view of the property. So, um, as you can see from the street side, um, that front porch, a front porch will be, um, expanded, um, or added two feet, six inches on each side, uh, basically giving it a little bit more of, uh, coverage, um, for the entrance of the, of the home itself. Uh, that would be the only change that's actually visible from the street itself. Uh, next slide please. So, um, for the analysis on this, uh, Seal Beach Municipal Code allows minor improvements to non-conforming residential structures. Section B in particular allows for minor improvements which involve the alteration or addition of roofs, balconies, and porches to non-conforming properties. The alterations proposed are consistent with the code and will not intensify the non-conforming setbacks. Because the applicant's proposed improvements, um, also included, uh, a minor kitchen remodel, it's a removal of two walls, the planning commission's approval, uh, is required, um, for this minor use permit. And no new bedrooms or inhabitable space is proposed beyond the existing, the exterior alterations, uh, as requested as a part of this minor use permit. The alterations proposed on the subject site are consistent with the provisions of this code and will not intensify the non-conforming setbacks. Next slide. So, our recommended action is, uh, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt this, um, attached resolution twenty dash ten, improving minor use permit twenty dash four with conditions. Uh, this concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy, ask, more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any commissioner comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, I will now open the public hearing. Uh, City Clerk Harper, do we have any emails, comments on this one?
No, Chair Klinger, no email comments on this item.
Okay, uh, with the applicant, is the applicant here? Would they like to address the commission? No?
Hello?
Yes, we have the applicant on the line. J T Sandoval.
Yes, hello?
Hello, would you like to address the planning commission?
I don't, everything seems fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I will now close the public hearing and call for a motion and a second.
Commissioner Thomas, I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Miller, if, I was going to say, I think Patty and I both said at the same time, Patty, would you like to, uh, uh, move it or second it?
Either one, doesn't matter.
All right. I'll tell you what, Patty can move, and I'll tell you what, I'll even defer to, uh, Commissioner Miller as the second, how about that?
Okay, sounds good. Uh, City Clerk Harper, can you please call for the vote?
Chair Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, uh, Assistant City Attorney Shaw.
Uh, thank you, Chair, no surprise here, but, uh, similar to the other items tonight, this, uh, this item has a ten-day appeal period, which will begin tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, it's the public hearings, the conditional use permit, twenty dash two at fifteen First Street, and the applicant is the Beach House LLC. Is there a report?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item after the evening is a fifteen First conditional use permit twenty dash two to allow the expansion of a deck area of an existing restaurant with an outdoor eating area and an existing type forty-seven on sale general alcohol license in the beach zoning area. The reason this conditional use permit is before you this evening is that any time floor area is increased on a site that has an existing conditional use permit for alcohol, the, uh, change can require a conditional use permit, and that's why we're here this evening. Next. As you can see from the site location, the beach house is, uh, right on the beach, surrounded by a parking lot, and about two hundred and fifty feet away, a residential unit along with a future park that is just north of this location. Next. Here on the site plan, in the greenish color, the bluish color kind of shows the, uh, is real close to the outline of the area for the beach house. The green square and the rectangle are indications of the expansion of the deck. Next. As you can see from the elevations, the materials that are going to be utilized are similar to the existing materials, uh, that are proposed for the upgrading elevations that were approved previously by this planning commission. Uh, the bottom where we have the rectangle and the square are the areas again where we were adding on. So realistically, they're squaring off this particular area. Next slide. The addition here can add, as you can see, approximately three to four, uh, more tables. But as part of this proposal, uh, condition number twelve limits the occupancy of the proposal. One, um, due to parking, the other just due to, uh, limitations as it pertains to square footage here on the site. Uh, you did receive a correspondence this evening from, um, Robert Goldberg, and it kind of addresses, it, it asked the question as to the increase in the deck area. And as part of that, uh, we did look at this. The staff report is a little bit different as it could, as it pertains to condition twelve because it was a, in addition, we made towards, uh, the later portion of reviewing this application. But in order to allow this to move forward, in order to, uh, get this before you, the total number of occupancy is a hundred and fifty-one, and we took that from a set of working drawings that the applicant had, uh, submitted to the building department. And we utilized that number as we felt it was sufficient to be able to allow the occupant to still run a, the business quite well and still allow this addition and squaring off of the deck area to move forward. With that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any commissioner comments or questions?
Yes, I have a couple. Um, one in the resolution under section three, no, section four, item C. Uh, it is recommended that the applicant add a bike rack to accommodate and emphasize biking. Never, not, I don't want it to be a recommendation, put it in, put in a, a bike rack, because, um, it is anticipated that people that are going to come to the beach house are not just going to drive in, they're going to, people today are all over the place on their bicycles. They'll come down the San Gabriel River Trail, um, they'll bike in from First and Ocean, they'll walk in from First and Ocean and from the beach. So, um, I think adding a bike right, bike, bike rack, uh, should be included, not recommended, but do it, okay? Put it in there. And then the second one is, I don't know, uh, how do you resolve the fact that, uh, in the recommend, in the, it's the staff report, um, the, under analysis, the third paragraph down, second sentence, it says, "The proposed occupancy increase." Well, right there, you've got a proposed occupancy increase, but then, under section twelve, it says, "An occupancy of a hundred and fifty-one." There, there is an inconsistency there, okay? And, uh, I think one of the things that should come out of this, but it's not in our purview, it's something the council should look at, is if they're adding six hundred square feet, they should be increasing the lease amount, but that's not our purview. But, but I don't know how you, how you reconcile the, uh, staff report saying a proposed, uh, inc, a pro, occupancy increase, and then under section twelve, maximum occupancy of a hundred and fifty-one? Because quite frankly, you're not going to be able to control how many people come to that, since they can come. That site is unique, there's nothing around it. You're at the end of the beach, end of the river, and you're two hundred and fifty feet from the nearest house. So, I mean, it's not like you're putting it in the middle of Main Street where a bunch of people are going to care. This is not that situation. And, um, I just look at this and, um, how do you reconcile the staff report to the resolution? Because, um, you can easily get more than a hundred and fifty, and people are going to then walk out onto the beach. It's a public beach. So, I don't know how you reconcile what's in the staff report with what's in the resolution. But again, I would also like to say, I think, uh, including a, a bike rack, it should not be recommended, it needs to be in there, include a bike rack.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is, uh, Senior Planner Fowler. Um,
With the way that this particular site is designed, with boundaries around the deck, an actual entrance that comes in off of the sidewalk, the 150, the occupancy of 151 can be a number that can be hard counted. After the, if they go in here and they leave the location, it's just like any other location along Main Street or anywhere else in the city. That's no longer an occupancy issue at that point in time. It's just when you're inside that leasable area that we actually count that type of occupancy.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, this is Director Johnson. Could I speak really quick of this as well?
Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention also, as, as Mr. Fowler noted, that the occupancy of 151 that's identified isn't forcible. It is something that we have spoken as of late with the applicant about. When they brought this forward, we initially were looking at it with the possibility of additional occupancy, but as a result, we spoke with them about this and basically informed them that additional occupancy was not really our intent to see that. They understood that, concurred with that, and that's why we've established the condition of 151. And as Steve mentioned, that condition and that number is based on what was before you originally for this project, and we wanna see that occupancy retained going forward, that the squaring off of the deck, the safety improvements they've identified to justify that, we wanna, we support that, but we do not support an additional occupancy being proposed with this. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. It is very much enforceable when an occupancy is established on a piece of property or within a building, and that's a matter that we'll be monitoring as this project goes forward.
How do you feel about bike rack?
We, we support that. I 100% concur with, with that. We want to promote and encourage other modes of transportation besides cars to this location. So absolutely, we support that. I mean, I, as, as, as the community director, I definitely support having a bike rack there.
Can that be, it's recommended, but can it be concrete?
Yeah, that's at your purview, absolutely, and I believe the applicant will be able to speak to that when the public hearing is open, but, you know, from the staff perspective, I see no objection at all to making that a condition of approval.
Okay, 'cause recommended gives the impression that it's optional.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments or questions? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have any email comments on this one?
Yes, Chair Klinger, we received one email comment from Robert Goldberg, and it reads, "Dear Commissioners, I think there may be conflicting language between the staff report and the proposed CUP amendment regarding whether the proposed additional square footage will result in additional occupancy. The staff report indicates that it will. In the analysis section, the beginning of the third paragraph refers to, and it's in quotation, "the proposed occupancy increase," closed quotation, and proceeds to analyze the parking implications of this. However, in section five of the resolution, condition 12 states that the maximum occupancy will be 151 as specified in building plans from 11/10/18. For clarity, I would ask that the commission discuss and resolve this issue prior to approving the CUP. Thank you for your service, Robert Goldberg."
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Commissioner, Commissioner and staff. This is Tom Rowe. I represent the beach house. I'm also the owner of the abbey in Seal Beach. And unfortunately, we don't get to see all this live and all that regarding, you know, the details in the application and the report, and with the current situation and time, it's been difficult. We do recognize the fact that there is not an intent to increase the occupancy or anything that would follow that, such as parking. The intent of this is that as the applicant proceeds to build out this project, hopefully over the next six months, and be open by next spring, the applicant will be under most likely a minimum of 50% reduction in occupancy governed by the state. None of us know how long the COVID or any secondary viruses or anything to this will take effect over the next year or two, but we are all preparing in the restaurant industry and other industries to deal with this. And at the time of when the occupancy, I'm sorry, the applicant did their lease negotiations and their planning, they were planning on having an occupancy of 151, therefore their number crunching in regards to the build out and the operation expense were based on that. At a 50% reduction, as currently mandated, and many of us are going through, it would be almost impossible for them to complete the job, open up, and be successful. So the intent of the expansion is purely to offset the social distancing requirements and any other thing that might come from the state. Hopefully, it won't get stricter than 50%, but this at least gives them an opportunity to excel in their business and to have an occupancy closer to what their original intent was. It still will not meet the 151 exactly, but it will also really enhance the social distancing, space between tables, walking pathways, and things like that. That is the sole purpose, the sole idea of doing this. The time in which this is being done right now, as this is under review at the Coastal Commission, is to all encompass this and not have further delays down the road that would inhibit the building and the build out of this project and lead us into next summer, which is a blackout period. So the applicant chose to put this before you as soon as they could, which has been in the last 30, 40 days, and hopefully get an amendment of a CUP to coastal for their review, and we're gonna ask for them to expedite this as they've had this before them since April. And hopefully will be permitted sometime between September and October and therefore be able to start construction. So once again, the applicant is quite aware of the occupancy requirements and no change, and that's what's on their mind, and that's what the intent is. And regarding the bike rack, I can assure you that that will not be an issue, that the applicant wants to encourage people to ride their bike down to the beach, to park near the restaurant, and to make it easy and accessible. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a second, please.
This is Commissioner Thomas, I'll second it.
Okay. And City Clerk Harper, will you please take the vote?
Chair Klinger.
Commissioners, if we could clarify the motion, and I, just to get the Ted clear, is the motion inclusive of the comment about, the earlier comment that the commission discussed about the bike rack or not? And then, and then you can go ahead and do the vote.
Mr. Miller?
I, I'm, I'm good with as-is. I, I'm sure.
Bike rack in?
I'm sorry?
You don't want the bike rack in?
Oh, I'm, I'm just, I, why wouldn't they do it? I mean, I don't know, I just.
You, you gotta put it in writing, that's what I'm saying. You gotta put it in writing.
There's so many restrictions right now with restaurants. I hate to, I hate to make somebody go through even more challenges just to get a restaurant open, so.
No, it's, it's, that's not it at all. You just put it in the resolution, that's all.
Yeah, you know what, Steve, I, I agree with you. However, the applicant said they're okay with it, it wasn't gonna be a problem, so I would just, I would just leave it in.
If the applicant is 100% good with it, then sure, doesn't matter.
Yeah. But I do agree with your statement, your earlier statement, we could condition this all day. So, so yeah, to clarify, I think we're saying, yeah, we'll go ahead and, because the applicant said that there was, they had no issue with the bike rack issue, we will include, the motion is to include the Commissioner Campbell's recommendation on requiring bikes, bike racks. I think that's right.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk Harper?
Chair Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote? Commissioner Thomas?
Hello?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote? Commissioner Winkler?
Hello?
She out there?
Yeah, she's muted.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion carried. Assistant City Attorney Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is a conditional use permit, which is a little bit different than the previous items, but however, it also has a 10-day appeal period that begins tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Is there a director's report?
Madam Chair, commission members, I'll be brief. I did wanna just mention a couple things to you. Again, first of all, thank you for your continued patience, understanding with this format of meeting together. Believe me, it's less than ideal, and we're remaining hopeful and optimistic that we'll be able to get together again before too long, but please know from the staff level, we miss coming together and, and being able to meet face-to-face with you, and appreciate your continued patience and understanding with the technology and some of the difficulties associated with that. I wanted to just real briefly mention to you, and I know you're seeing a lot of it within the community, but due to the impacts of, of the pandemic and COVID-19 upon our business community, there have been a number of, of temporary allowances that the city council has recently allowed. And just real quickly, there's three in particular. The first one has to do with outdoor dining on private property as well as with, in the sidewalk areas on Main Street, within the Main Street Business Corridor. You've probably seen a number of those throughout the community, and businesses taking advantage of that, be it examples like Finn Bars and what they've recently done, and again, a few of our restaurants on Main Street that have focused in on sidewalk dining. More recently, city council approved outdoor dining utilizing parklets, and you've probably noticed that within the last couple of weeks, we've had, I think we're up to 12 now, dining parklets that have been established within the Main Street Business Corridor, and we have a couple additional ones that are being processed right now. And then third was another allowance that council recently approved, having to do with the ability for businesses to temporarily conduct certain activities outdoors, and that's an allowance throughout the community. And obviously, this is all as a result of the orders that have come from the governor, no longer allowing for indoor dining in restaurants, but also, in addition to that, not allowing for a number of activities to exist within buildings as well. So for example, a couple of our fitness studios are now utilizing spaces to conduct with proper social distancing, some classes outdoors. We've also seen a couple service-related businesses, so far, a couple of nail salons and a hair salon that have asked for temporary allowances to operate outdoors, and we're very carefully looking at each of those as they come in and are reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Another item too, that you may have noticed, is the city is operating a communal dining area at Eisenhower Park on Wednesdays through Sundays in the late afternoon, evening hours, which we've seen a lot of success. We originally started with eight tables, we're now up to 16 tables and are seeing those tables utilized virtually every evening throughout the open period. So again, these are all temporary measures that are directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic, with those allowances having that, that connection. So hopefully, when things turn around and go back in a more favorable direction, we'll see these items being modified or possibly even being removed. I do wanna mention that that's not anticipated to happen in the near term. For example, the parklet allowance was up through the end of January, again, unless there's a different direction taken by the state in allowing for 100% occupancy inside of restaurants during that time. But again, just wanted to bring that to your attention, and certainly, if at any time you have any questions, comments, concerns at the staff level, we're more than willing to talk with you. So again, just wanted to give an update on that, and hopefully, again, these, these matters will be short-lived and will get back to normal, if you will, in the not-too-distant future. But thank you, Madam Chair, commission measures. Again, just wanted to bring these to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any commission concerns?
This, this is Rondi Winkler. First of all, I wanted to thank the staff for everything that they've done. They certainly get back to you on, when leaving telephone messages, anything, and that's really appreciated. But my second concern had to do if either the chair and/or the recording, somebody could say, identify who the first and second are, because I'm not really familiar with everybody's voices yet. So that would be appreciated for my note. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
This is Commissioner Miller.
Go ahead.
I love the parklets. I, I hope they stay. I hope some of them stay like permanently. I think that's one thing that Main Street's always lacked is outdoor dining. Though I think it'd be cool if we made a couple of them permanent, or all of them.
Yeah, this is Chair Klinger, I also agree with that. That would be great. Okay, anyone else? Upon hearing no more, the planning commission, we will adjourn the meeting to Monday, August 17th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone.